Welcome to the special meeting of the Entertainment and Facilities Committee. I am joined by my colleague Paul Krikorian. We have quorum and we will begin this meeting. And what we will do is we will, we'll start with some public comment. What I'm going to do is recommend some of these items on consent, but since we have comment cards filled out on every item by two individuals, we'll hear those comments before we get started. So having said that, what I'd like to do is call up to the table Wayne from Encino and then Herman. You each have two minutes to hear all of your items and there will be no public comment on general public comment at this special meeting. So you have two minutes. Uh huh. Have a seat.
You afraid of public comment?
I'm afraid of nothing.
Really?
You have two minutes. Go.
How about that? So at number one, we have the criminal Jose Weezer, CD fourteen, in the Parker Center site. We're going to tear it down, but I know some people in here, like the one that's, you know, he doesn't want to do that. So I say tear down Parker Center, turn it into something different. Now we've got the National Council of Jewish Women and the Coalition to Abolish Slavery and Trafficking to Report on Compliance Checks. Well, the first thing you have to do, if you're going to be in compliance with these people, stop shooting black people in redevelopment zones. You've got to put that in your motion because you're still doing it. You're still doing it. You've got to stop all that stuff, okay? Because you know, if you're going to redevelop, pay these people to leave under the Ellis Act, do not send the police to beat and shoot and kill and maim. That's just not the way to do business in a civilized society. So yes, we are not abolishing slavery in the city. They're expanding slavery in the city and I don't think you should be doing business with this criminal-run city. And then the rest of this stuff, you know, it's just garbage all of it. I mean, it's just one big black hole, a budgetary hell. CD fourteen, CD fourteen. I mean, the guys downstairs, just page them. Hello, Jose Weezer, please come up to the tenth floor. Jose Weezer, come up to the tenth floor.
Excuse me, I didn't invite you up here. Go take a seat.
Why? He just wants to come up here and begin speaking. I mean, you know, let's give two minutes to speak. And finally...
Okay, our next speaker is Herman. Please step forward. You're done.
What a dumb bitch. What a bitch, under forty-two USC. What a nineteen eighty-three, what a fucking little bitch. Anyways, on item seven regarding CD fourteen, isn't it kind of ironic that we have a homeless report on viability of including property? Well, you know what? The way I look at it is, why are people with AIDS being segregated or separated from the schools when they're homeless? The ADA Department of Justice says, you cannot discriminate against people under Title Two on, just because they have AIDS and they're homeless? What the fuck's wrong with you people? People who have AIDS are going to die. So give them housing that is adequate, efficient, and provides a quality of life so the stupid motherfucker with AIDS could live forever in his home and die. See, when I worked at County USC, I used to put people with AIDS back in my days in body bags on the eighth floor, internal medicine, White Memorial, no, USC, fool. So I'm looking forward to going back to work at USC so I can put dumb motherfuckers that have AIDS in body bags because the city of LA likes homeless people living in the street dying with AIDS. And the goat manager agrees with me because look how ready he looks. But again, this is all about Jose Weezer, the fucking constitutional violator of my rights to City Hall. And then I go to CD fourteen and item number six, another motherfucker on Jose Weezer, fuck him. And then item three, motion by O'Farrell and fucked head fences, chimp mark. Fuentes doesn't exist in District Seven anymore. That's an absent seat. So what we're going to do this time around is vote for Joe and move fucking Sid Hill and helpless motherfucker out of the area. So we have Joe Ali for the new council District One. Thank you all.
The First Amendment at work for all of us on full display. All right, so Mr. Krikorian, what I'd like to do is take items three through seven on consent.
No objection.
Without objection. And we might have...
Yeah, Mr. Chair, there's a technical correction for item number four. The MFC Transmittal has the incorrect address. It should be twelve hundred West Seventh Street instead of one twenty South San Pedro.
All right, so with the technical correction on item four, as noted, we will move items three through seven on consent. Thank you so much. Mr. Espinola, so that brings us, I'm going to go a little out of order. We're going to start with item number two on the agenda. So please read item two.
Item number two is a motion from council members Martinez and Wesson and a verbal presentation from the National Council of Jewish Women of Los Angeles and the Coalition to Abolish Slavery and Trafficking relative to establishing compliance checks of mandated establishments under Senate Bill one one nine three, section fifty-two point six, which
I also want to thank Councilwoman Martinez, CAST, NCJW, and City Attorney's Office for their work and advocacy on this issue. Understand that Councilwoman Martinez is also working with Assemblymember Santiago from the State Assembly and Senator Stern from the State Senate to make improvements to the current law to assist local agencies with enforcement. We look forward to finding solutions for compliance with SB 1193 and further promoting this important resource to fight human trafficking. And with that, we have no additional comment cards on item two, but we do have presenters. Anne Trong, City Attorney, please step forward. And National Council of Jewish Women, NCJW, is here as a representative. And then CAST Coalition to Abolish Slavery and Trafficking is here also for the presentation. Thank you so much for joining us. And Mr. Trong, would you like to begin?
I'll go after the other.
Sure. Please. Welcome, thank you.
Thank you so much. My name is Cassandra Kutchmar and I have been volunteering with CAST and NCJW for six years on this project. So I thank you guys very much for making your offices available to meet with us in the past week to review. Human trafficking is about exploitation of persons. It is a crime that involves violations of labor, public health, and human rights standards in which an individual is coerced into labor or commercial sex through forced fraud or coercion. And I have personally answered the hotline for many years and I wanted to read off some statistics since SB 1138 has been in motion. In 2011, there were only a total of 133 hotline calls to the CAST hotline. In 2016, we're at 1708. So it's been a huge increase since we've started working on this project. And in 2016, 207 of those calls came directly from the posters. And some of the places that these posters are mandated are bars, strip clubs, airports, bus stations, truck stops, emergency rooms, and urgent care centers. This should hopefully be expanded to hotels and motels in the coming year. And we've been working very hard with a number of volunteers to get this project off the ground. And we want to especially thank Mayor Garcetti, Supervisor Mark Ridley-Thomas, Councilwoman Nuri Martinez, as well as Sheriff McDonald for their continued support of our project.
Just to brief history of what our involvement, after this was passed by Sacramento, we realized it wasn't being enforced. And so we came up with the Human Trafficking Outreach Program. And we have, totally through volunteers, we have been posting these throughout the city. We have had, we train people before they go out. A year ago, in January, we had an evening that we called Eyes on Trafficking and we trained on-the-spot volunteers and we went out throughout the city. When the procedure is, you go out, the city sends out a letter from the City Attorney's Office and then we go out and we have the poster, we have another letter, and we ask if they're aware of this law. We give them the poster, sometimes they let us put it up. We say we'll be back for a second visit. And we go back to the second visit and usually the posters are not there. There's under a, what is it, 40%?
We're at 46%.
We're at 46% compliance. And then there are places we haven't even, you know, been to yet. We're going to have another outreach, big outreach evening on this year on April 20th. The reason why we feel so important for this motion to pass is that if bars in particular don't really see that they're going to be fined, they don't really have a lot of incentive to put up the posters. And we really feel that if there can be a way to enforce the law, then there will be more incentive and we will see the posters, you know, going up. And especially because it's also going to hopefully include hotels, it's going, and motels. We're really spanning out, but we really need the support to get it enforced. You know, we're all volunteers and we don't really have any clout. We just come in with smiles.
Well, we should also say, you know, City Attorney Mike Shore, as well as Mr. Trong, have been, you know, spent a great deal of time coming up with these lists of who the businesses are, sending out the letters. And I think we're at 467 volunteers feet on the ground. So we are ready to enforce this. We just need, you know, this motion to pass and a plan.
And I know, I saw that you had a copy of this, but last year we wrote this summary of what has been going on and we want to leave these and some of these with you.
Sure.
And I think it would be great if every council district office would put some of these up also because the more they're seeing, the more people call the hotline and more people can be saved from human trafficking, both sexual trafficking and labor trafficking, both of which are going on in this city and throughout the United States.
Please leave and we'll be happy to distribute to all of our colleagues and suggest that they go up in the district offices especially.
Yeah, that would be terrific. We so appreciate that.
And the new transit system is mandated also and I haven't seen them up there, so we're hoping that we can really work on that as well.
Terrific. Love you.
Thank you. I'm here to answer any questions you may have, but the City Attorney's Office has worked closely with National Council as well as CAST from the start about how to best deal with SB 1193. And there are definite challenges. I think we're all headed in the right direction, hopefully to get some help to allow city to, the city to do our own ordinance perhaps. That may give us more options. Right now, as it's currently written, the remedy is really left to a civil remedy and it's, the statute is not crystal clear how we proceed. What I understand from the motion is really to set up an infrastructure going forward where anybody, including building and safety inspectors, LAPD CID section, if they're on site, you just add another checkbox and while they're doing whatever they're doing to say, oh, by the way, you are not in compliance with Civil Code Section 52.6. That will allow us to capture from a city perspective, the first notice of violation. The National Council has been wonderful, but they rely on volunteers, many of whom may or may not know that they potentially could be a witness in a case and we don't want to put them in that situation. But if we can get it within the city family, have the structure, we will hit the ground running once we're able to do our own ordinance.
Great. And Senator Stern and Assemblymember Santiago are beefing up the statute at the state level, it looks like?
There are two, yeah, there appear to be two bills they duplicate for the most part of adding the hotels and motels to add another category of those who would be required to post.
Terrific. And one question I have before Mr. Krikorian asks, and that is in terms of the other languages that it might be available in.
Right now, our posters have on it English and Spanish and Chinese, but if, we print these, by the way. And so if a bar, a strip club, a hotel asks for another language, we actually printed another language. I have personally taken one in Russian to a strip club. So, you know, and that was good. I felt good they asked for it.
Did they know what to make of you when you walked in with the poster?
Well, you know, I'm a little old lady, you know? They were actually very sweet.
So I think Armenian would be good and Korean and Thai and.
It's whatever they ask. When you go in, this is what is mandated. And when you, when you go in, we say, is there another language that you would like to have this printed in? And if they say yes, then we comply and we take it back.
Terrific. Thank you. Mr. Krikorian.
You anticipated my first question, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing that I'd like to be considered by the City Attorney's Office in the report back is the possibility of including compliance with Section 52.6 as a standard term of all conditional use permits. So that when a new bar is opened or when any property requiring the CUP comes along, that that be one of the standard conditions of that use. It might provide, I don't know, I don't know whether it's feasible, whether, to what extent we can do that, but I think it would provide another element of leverage that certainly bar owners will take much more seriously than the risk of a fine. So that would be one thing. And then the other question I had is whether, whether violation of this section might be appropriate for ACE program enforcement.
And yes, if we have the state legislative amendment of non-preemption, then the city can pass our own ordinance that will allow us, you know, as you know, violations of the code provide a criminal remedy, misdemeanor remedy, a civil remedy, as well as we can pull into ACE as well. So that, that would provide us all options to handle, I think, the concern about one business who may scoff the first time and then comply the second time to other ones where it's a cost of doing business, they're never going to comply.
Absolutely. Does the, so does the statute currently expressly preempt or are we just, is it implied preemption?
The way that it's written, it's pretty, it's pretty complete that it's that the state, the state preempts this area. And so we would have to have a provision that says it's not meant to basically preempt local municipalities from promulgating their own rules.
Okay. So even if the municipal ordinance exactly tracked the language of the state legislation so that there was no variation, that we were absolutely as, in concert with the state provision, because it's express preemption, you think in that case, we still couldn't even do that?
I think you get into a, and we have other attorneys who can speak on this. Once you get into the preemption analysis, it gets very complex.
I know.
So there's a question of has the state preempted this field? We haven't quite seen posting, but in terms of trafficking, you do have penal code sections talking about sex and labor trafficking. And so there's argument that there is a scheme in place to deal with violations relating to this area.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm sure all that will be considered in the report back, so.
Terrific. So we'll approve the motion and look forward to the report back, especially in relation to compliance with 52.6 as a standard condition.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is that right?
Of course, yeah, we'll, we'll make sure, I'll distribute it personally from my office. Yeah.
Great, thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all your great work and volunteerism on this. All right. All right, Mr. Espino, so that brings us to item number one.
Item number one are final environmental impact reports and multiple departmental reports regarding the Parker Center site and reports from the CAO relative to the Civic Center Land Use Master Plan and Financial Feasibility Study.
All right, so what we have before us is Civic Center Master Plan and Parker Center item. Our second time discussing it in this committee, last time we requested more information on the preservation of various elements of Parker Center. Today we'll hear a summary of the report and details regarding the preservation of these various elements. And before we have our panel to give us the report, let's, let's do comment on this. And let's start with Rick Koka from Councilmember Wezar's office. I would like to say a few words. Welcome and thank you.
Afternoon, councilmembers. Thank you both for considering this. Well, as you know, the two items before you, the approval of the Parker Center EIR and its recommended B3 alternative, as well as the adoption of the Civic Center Master Plan framework will set forth, in our opinion, a truly bright, dynamic, and inclusive future for the Civic Center and the surrounding communities. The Civic Center, as you all know, is not designed in a way that is conducive to our dynamic environment we have today in downtown. It is one of the only areas in downtown where there is nothing going on after nine to five. We used to say that about Broadway, but we put efforts there and revitalized it. But now I think you could safely say about the Civic Center, it's probably one of the only places in downtown that just closes shop at 5:00 PM. And even then, during nine to five, it's not exactly the most inviting place to spend your day in. Part of how we got here is in 2015, the Councilmember, Councilmember Wezar, my boss, issued a motion, one, asking for more information and getting some preservation elements be looked at with Parker Center and wasn't in the EIR at that time. It is now there, considerable studying was done. We did find however, that's $100 million more and some other things. That as well, that 2015 motion, he asked for a Civic Center Master Plan. Because we kept having this conversation about this one building and we really needed to discuss the entire area. And so now we have a vision, a blueprint that could really be a game changer for the city 15 years from now. It would really be something to behold. One of the other major elements that we had to grapple with obviously was how Parker Center, going back to Parker Center, was built and the exclusion of a community that had a history of being excluded and talking about the Japanese community in Little Tokyo and how today, this is a way of, not just only righting a wrong, but creating a new right, a truly inclusive pathway for the city of Los Angeles and for the Little Tokyo community, as well as the historic core, Chinatown, El Pueblo, the Arts District, to feel that they are part of downtown Los Angeles. City Hall, Civic Center, we welcome them. And for obviously all the financial reasons and all the rest, we, we agree with the B3 alternative for Parker Center and obviously wholeheartedly support the Civic Center Master Plan as a truly game-changing, dynamic document that could really propel Los Angeles into the future for many years to come. Thank you.
Terrific. Thanks, Mr. Koka. Thank you. All right, so we have a few speaker cards here and everyone will have 60 seconds, one minute. We're going to start with Adrian Scott Fine, followed by Ellen Endo.
Hello, Adrian Scott Fine with the Los Angeles Conservancy. Not every historic building can be saved, but decisions should be based on facts and fair and objective public process, neither of which were entirely present here. We have inflated cost estimates to rehab Parker Center that defy best practices, are in part based on a 1995 memo and analysis, and include lying items that are three times the cost for comparable work taking place in more than a dozen similar projects across the city. We have a master plan, a master plan that was entirely conceived on demolition and a limited invitation-only public participation process that also shuts out the City Planning Commission and impacts a national register-eligible historic district. We are pleased with the revised CAO recommendations now that they comply with CEQA. If Parker Center is to be demolished, we ask that you condition your EIR approval today so that demolition only proceed when and if a replacement project and permits are ready to go with financing in place for that, so that we don't unnecessarily demolish this building. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Endo, followed by Ray Fukuda.
Ellen? This is Ellen, isn't it here?
Okay. All right. Ray Fukuda, followed by Christian Fukushima.
Good afternoon, honorable councilmembers. My name is Ray Fukuda. I'm a project manager and planner with the Little Tokyo Service Center. I just mainly want to support the EIR alternative B3 and some of the reasons for that is due to it including a strong pathway into Little Tokyo, public parking opportunities for new and existing businesses that will likely to see in the coming years. And also that it's dramatically less costly, $107 million less than alternative before, which includes the preservation of Parker Center according to the BOE Los Angeles Street Civic Building Study. So for all those reasons, we support alternative B3.
Thank you. Christian Fukushima.
My name is Christian Fukushima. I'm the managing director for the Little Tokyo Community Council, which is the 501(c)(3) Community Coalition of Businesses, Residents, Nonprofits, Other Business Stakeholders in the Little Tokyo Community. I'm also here to support the city-recommended B3 EIR alternative, which is the demolition option. In past hearings, we've talked about why we are against preservation. So for this moment, I want to say that I think that demolition option is the best option to secure the future of Little Tokyo. It's also what is best for the city. And then it also is the only option that looks to replace the parking that will be eventually taken from lots two and seven on the First Street North parcel and also thinks more about the connection and linkages to the Little Tokyo community from City Hall. I'm also here to give an unofficial support to the Civic Center Master Plan. We haven't officially voted on it, but two of our board members did work with the city on the Community Advisory Council. We also want to thank the city for doing that good engagement with our community to include a community advisory council that we actually think should be continued throughout the whole process of the Civic Center Master Plan as it's implemented and that it also did not look at land use planning for the First Street North and Main Grove properties. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have no other speaker cards. I think that's accurate. And then, so we're ready to assemble the panel. We have, coming up with us, Mahmud Karimzadeh from Bureau of Engineering, Jackie Wagner from CAO's office, Stephanie Magnin Rockwell from CAO's office as well, and then Tim Mc- from CAO's office as well, and then Tim McWilliams, City Attorney. Oh, are they, yeah, we have more. Extra chairs up here. Thank you. And welcome.
Good afternoon, councilmember. We're going to start with the, our report back on the Civic Center master plan. Or do you want to go first? Okay. Okay. So good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Jacqueline Wagner and I'm with the CAO's office and I'm joined by Stephanie Magnan Rockwell, who is my lead staffer on the Civic Center master plan, as well as the Parker Center project. And to start with, I'd just like to give you a little background. Not including City Hall, City Hall East, the Police Administration Building, the 911 Center, and the Metro Detention Center within this three-block radius of the Civic Center. The city has approximately 5,500 employees in both leased and city-owned spaces. While the rest of downtown has been experiencing an incredible renaissance and upgrade through this past decade, the Civic Center and city-owned spaces have remained relatively unchanged and in some cases seriously outdated and dilapidated. In May 2015, the council approved a motion by Councilmember Huizar with two primary instructions. And as already indicated by Rick, the first was to perform a Civic Center facilities master plan study of a defined area within the Civic Center with a goal of identifying 1.2 million square feet of office space to fill the city's needs. It should be noted that the 1.2 million square feet would represent a reduction from the 1.7 million square feet currently leased and occupied by these same employees. The second goal was to, was an instruction to BOE to explore alternative B4, a look at how the city could preserve the existing Parker Center structure and build around it to produce the required square footage. With regard to alternative B4, the BOE explored that option and incorporated their findings in a separate report, which Mahmud will be presenting shortly. In response to the first instruction of the May 2015 motion, on September 18th, 2015, the council approved a report from the Municipal Facilities Committee and authorized the CAO to proceed with a conceptual facilities/land use master plan study of the civic area and to hire a consultant that could do three things. Prepare a Civic Center facilities/land use master plan to assess and coordinate redevelopment opportunities in the Civic Center. Two, advise the city on opportunities for public-private partnerships to develop municipal facilities in the Civic Center. And three, assist the city in preparing a solicitation for development partners.
So in April 2016, the CAO Asset Management Group released an RFP and in June received eight collaborative and enthusiastic responses from some of the best land use and financial firms in the industry. Consultants IBI and Ernst &amp; Young were selected and began work in August 2016 to develop facilities/land use and financial feasibility plan for the Civic Center. To facilitate this work, we formed a working group consisting of staff from CD14, the mayor's office, CAO Municipal and Debt Groups, CAO Fuse Fellows, CLA, BOE, GSD, Planning, EWDD, and ITA. And to provide community input, the Community Advisory Committee consisting of residents and business representatives from Little Tokyo, Chinatown, El Pueblo, Historic Core, Arts District, and the Downtown Neighborhood Council met to provide input. The CAC shared that they wanted connectivity to other neighborhoods, 24/7 activation, environmental resiliency, economic viability, and a durable, lasting legacy for this plan. The two primary deliverables, which have been completed, are first, to create a land use facilities plan that would identify up to 1.2 million square feet of office space, a holistic vision for the future of the study area, and to inform the reuse of city properties for municipal uses and also for other potential uses, including commercial, residential, and cultural. The study was anticipated to inform city efforts to promote economic development, connectivity, and provide open space where available. It was also to create a financial plan for the construction of municipal facilities in the Civic Center core area that could be done with the most cost-efficient or cost-neutral manner. Procurement options were to include alternative delivery mechanisms such as public-private partnerships for the development, operation, and maintenance of new municipal buildings, ideally with minimal impact to the city's general fund. The major findings from the study included, based on the modeling performed by Ernst &amp; Young, there's a market for public-private partnerships that the city should be choose to pursue this path. Also that the city could achieve 1.2 million square feet of office space and generate additional revenues from the creation of retail and housing in the Civic Center to offset capital costs. And while this plan is conceptual, the work that has been done lets us know that there's a market for P3 and that the city could create a roadmap for consolidating these employees within the Civic Center core, creating both workplace and fiscal efficiencies. Since we last reported to this committee in January, the CAO has revised recommendations for your consideration. Specifically, it adds additional CEQA recommendations per the advice of the City Attorney's Office. These recommendations clarify that a land use plan is not being adopted, but rather a conceptual facilities framework, which will require additional analysis prior to implementation. CAO, CLA, and BOE will work through the Municipal Facilities Committee for additional instructions for implementation of this plan. Any land use changes that are required to implement the Civic Center master plan will be done in coordination with the Department of City Planning. CAO recommends the adoption of these recommendations, recommends the adoption of the recommendations contained in the March 14th, 2017 report, and that the CAO report from the January 10th, 2017, 2017 be received and filed. Also wanted to point out that we have in our audience Kirk Schmossu of IBI, as well as Tu-Yen Mai and Janos Man of Ernst &amp; Young, should any questions of our consultants...
Thank you. Thank you. And before we go on, I just want to state for the record, the whole time that everyone's been talking, there's been interruptions from Herman and Wayne. Just to note for the record, we can hear you. You're disrupting the entire room. And I think that's your intent, so congratulations. That is your, that is your first, okay, this is warning number two. This is warning number two. Are you, are you going to be quiet and not disrupt the meeting any further or not?
Mr. Chairman, any conversation between members of the audience and the chair or any member of this committee is inherently disruptive of the meeting. I'd ask that the member of the public who's speaking either remain silent or be removed from the room.
I agree completely. It's your choice. All right, let's continue.
That concludes the CAO report?
Thank you.
Sorry. In January 10, before your committee, we discussed a few things. Basically, the options before us through EIR about the former Parker Center, the Los Angeles Street Civic Building, the four option, no project, and the other three option, adaptive reuse, partial demolition, addition and adaptive reuse of the Aides Story Tower, and the replacement project. We also emphasized and spent good amount of time to present you two options. One was from the four option, B3, and one additional option that the former ITGS committee basically directed the Bureau of Engineering to go back to a study and bring a new option that would satisfy the city's need, at the same time preserve the Aides Story Tower building, which we started that meeting with cultural heritage members, with the council office, CAO, CLA, mayor office, everybody together. We created a scope, we did a study, and we presented you an option of, as a result of that study. That option, we called it B4, and still we are here to ask your approval of B3 option, which is the demolition and replacement of the Parker Center. You also asked us, Mr. Chairman, you also asked us at the end of the meeting to come back and report back to you about the preservation plan of the significant elements of the existing building. And I'd like to just very shortly, short and briefly mention few items in the EIR. Basically, the EIR, the finding of facts and statements of overriding considerations on page 12, under section 3.3, mitigation measure 3.3.2, under Historic Resources, requires that significant elements are treated as follows. Historic Resource Number Three, the Historic American Building Survey, HABS, and Historic American Landscape Survey, HALS, documentation shall be deposited with the Library of Congress, Los Angeles Public Library, Los Angeles Conservancy, and the Los Angeles Police History Museum within a month of completion. HR5, Historic Resource Number Five, based on the HABS, HALS documentation, the city shall create a display interpreting the building's significance and displaying it in the public spaces of the building within a month of issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the new building. The Historic Resource Number Six, the city shall document Parker Center according to HABS, HALS guidelines before demolition takes place. And also, the Historic Resource Number Seven, the city shall incorporate Parker Center's original public art pieces, theme mural of Los Angeles and family group into the design and setting of the new building or the police headquarters building on First Street. These public art elements shall be installed at the time of issuance of the certificate of occupancy. These are the two art pieces that are recognized within the EIR. One is at the team, the mural is at the lobby where you enter the Parker Center, right at the reception desk at your left. And the other one is a statue just before entering into the building. At the right side, there is a bronze statue. These are the two pieces that are mentioned in the EIR documentation. I'd be glad to answer any question you might have.
Okay. All right. Anything else right now? No? All right. So just jump into some questions here then. In terms of, in terms of the report dated March 14th, I know there was some back and forth on, is it a master plan or is it a framework? And that's really vexed a lot of people, right? From historic preservationists to some urban planners. I've even heard from some commissioners about concerns about the process in terms of if it's, if it's a master plan, it, it goes through a somewhat different process that involves going before a commission, et cetera. So this recommendation, this item number one, approve the center, the Civic Center master development plan and financial feasibility study, the plan as a conceptual facilities plan and financing framework to be studied and analyzed as required under the California Environmental Quality Act. Mr. City Attorney, can you elaborate on that? You landed on that language to satisfy your interpretation of, of the process in that it is titled a master plan that we're asked to approve here. Could you expand on that?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Tim McWilliams, Assistant City Attorney, appreciate the opportunity to try to lend some clarity to what is really a difficult distinction that we're trying to make, I think. And that is a very, a very key distinction between adopting a plan and what, what is being proposed here, which is approving it for further study in an EIR, in an EIR. A plan such as this cannot be adopted unless and until it's been studied as required under CEQA. That hasn't been done. So what, what's being presented to you today is approval of what under CEQA would be considered the project description. And then that project description here, what's in the proposed master, master plan, would then be studied under CEQA. What's a little confusing, I think, is perhaps, it's rare that you are presented with a project description before the EIR is completed. Usually you see that for the first time when you're given the EIR. There are occasions though where it's, it's desirable to get your, your input upfront on what the project description should be that is then studied in an EIR. It was done for the franchise hauling program. It was done for the plastic bag van where you counsel weighed in and blessed the concept of the plan and then said, go study it in the EIR and bring that back to us. And so that's, that's in a sense what's happening here. The actual adoption of the plan would happen at a future date after the plan has been studied in the EIR. And of course, that triggers all of CEQA's requirements for public input, meeting with stakeholders, and addressing any comments the public may have.
And the distinction is that this is actually land use though, and not, not a service-type use. This is actually land use.
I think the document is replete with references to the fact that it's intended to guide future land use. And so there certainly are elements of it that my office believes would have to go to the CPC, although I'm not the land use attorney. She couldn't be here today, but I was given that information to relay.
I just, I want to, just for the public record, have this dialogue just to satisfy concerns that, you know, those in the planning community have about, about the process. And I know it's, it's an unusual process in an unusual circumstance. And not everything fits perfectly into a well-established norm, and I realize that. And so I think you've answered a few of the other questions that I had just by, with that answer and that response as well. So in terms of jurisdiction, I think you answered that. You, I think the process is laid out right here in this report dated March 14th. And then, so if council approves the master plan and the financial feasibility study in concept, does the city then have any further ability to make changes in the future? Would there be any changes, if we suggested changes in the future, would that mean bringing aboard another consultant or?
You can absolutely change the plan in the future. You're not locked in. What, what you're saying at this point is that's what we would like you to study. That, that might evolve as the study takes place. I mean, CEQA does require a finite, unchanging project description, but that doesn't mean that you can't change it. It just, if you change it way down the road after an analysis has been done under CEQA, then you might have to reanalyze.
So we're still in the phase where it could be very flexible, very nimble, as, as components come to our attention and, and changes might be desired?
Correct. At least under CEQA, that's absolutely correct. Yeah.
And in terms of the financial feasibility study, does that commit the city to financing the development of any of the phases as proposed in the study? I, I have a feeling the answer is no, because of the flexibility that you just described.
That's correct.
And so we'll have to conduct a feasibility study for each phase of the project as it either, as we either build it as is in concept now, or as it morphs into a somewhat different design. You'd have to be, do a feasibility study for every project anyway, correct?
Correct. Yes.
Moving into the future?
Yes. That is our intention.
Okay. All right. And then in terms of Parker Center, so let's talk about the demolition. Now, what is the cost? Describe the costs of the building staying there. Describe the state of the building. I understand it's yellow-tagged.
The building is basically, could be, public hazard. The reason for that is the building structural integrity has been compromised in two earthquakes, 1971 Silmar earthquake and 1994 Norridge earthquake. There's study done after Norridge earthquake and a study done just before the police headquarters facility moves to the new building. It shows that the structure could be very susceptible to major severe damage if any earthquakes of magnitude of Silmar earthquake or Norridge earthquake happens within five miles of the Parker Center. So as such, if you just imagine what could be the worst-case scenario, of course, for, God forbid, that would be the scenario, however, it is there. The building right now is under general services, safety and security. And my understanding is the cost of a year keeping the building intact the way it is and nobody gets in, nobody, you know, basically go around the building is $100,000 per year. However, we had a deal with the Department of Building and Safety at the time. Then we moved the last piece of the section of the police facilities from the building out that within certain years, the building would be one way or the other, on, either under repair or demolition for the new, new replacement. So that is running out. So the building and safety could at any time come and red-tag the building.
Okay. So do you think it's safe at all or feasible to delay the demolition until we have a development or a financial feasibility plan?
All the reports that, Councilman, we have received from our structural engineers throughout the years, I'm not talking about just recent reports, reports since 1994 Norridge earthquake, that shows that the building could severely be damaged if any earthquake of that magnitude happened within five miles. So you can imagine, God forbid, if any earthquake of that magnitude happens, the building could be harmful to the surrounding area. We have public facility from area, public is close to the building, believe it or not. It's not that far from sidewalk. I think our recommendation is to demolish the building as soon as possible if you and the city council approve and certify the EIR.
How soon do you think you could get financing off? How soon do you think you could get financing options in place for a replacement?
Well, that we will have to study and, under the oversight of the Municipal Facilities Committee. I just wanted to add on to what Mahmoud said with regard to the structural instability of the building and potential other liabilities that we have there. Currently, under the Parker Center building are electrical and HVAC connections that support the rest of the Civic Center area, well, the LA Mall area in particular. And so one of the first orders of business is to begin the detangling of those connections. So in the event of some kind of seismic event, if it should happen, we would not be faced with having to dig out from under rubble just to detangle that. So that's one of the, I think it's more of a health and safety as well as a, you know, operational requirement that we would need to have happen immediately.
Correct. Just adding that to that, the Metro Detection Center and Parker Center, former whatever operation was there, and City Hall East, they're connected in terms of the mechanical equipment. So one of the first order of the business when we dealing with the Parker Center issue is to disconnect that relationship. Create of the Metro Detection Center own, basically boiler room or boilers, so we can disconnect the Parker Center from the rest of Civic Center.
Got it.
So and with regard to the financing, those are the instructions that we would require to go back to the MFC in order to fully explore. The plan that we have presented is more of a facilities plan. It was, it's conceptual, but it would require refining. It does not exactly contain the, the actual stacking plan of who would go into any of these replacement buildings. It would require additional study. I know there is, the balance of the funding is not yet identified, so we have to report back on that.
Councilman, maybe, may I add this? I think your, was your question particularly about demolition finance, financing or?
Just, there's been a suggestion made to not do a demolition until a plan and the financing is in place for the plan. So that's, that's what prompted me to ask that. Now, MICLA funding was previously allocated for the demolition of Parker Center, and that would have to be reallocated, I understand?
MICLA funding was, yes, it was pre, it was previously authorized in the 13, 14, or 14, 15 budget, and the BOE report includes an instruction to do the reauthorization of that. We've already been in communication with our debt management group, and we have a place holder for that reauthorization.
And to your knowledge, reauthorizing that MICLA funding, does that take away from any other critical project?
Yeah, because that amount from the initial approval has been scoped out in their, in their plan, their manager plan.
All right. All right. I can't think of any other questions that I have at the moment, but Mr. Kocorian may very well have.
No, I think you, you covered my areas. The one that I was especially concerned about was this idea that we would demolish the building and then have the property sit vacant for years and not implement the master plan, not implement the replacement building. And you've addressed one of the reasons why you wouldn't want to have a conditional demolition permit. But maybe could you talk a little bit more about, with more specificity, about what the seismic risks would be? What would be endangered if there were a significant earthquake and there were catastrophic collapse? What sort of consequences? I get the inaccessibility of the wiring and the, you know, subterranean issues, but what, what other risks could that pose?
It would be very difficult to say, since the earthquake could happen in different ways and the building could behave differently. So we don't know. The answer to that question is exactly, we don't know. But what we can basically suspect from the behavior of the building, assuming that the source does not add anything to it, the condition of the structure is as such that in a magnitude of the earthquake that happened in Nordridge in 1994, the building could be severely damaged, could collapse, could be pieces of the building that fall down into the public areas or into the surrounding areas, or could be other facts like damaging the infrastructure around the building that we have, including the infrastructure we have that connects the boilers of the Civic Center to the Metro Detection Center. So as it is building, the building there is not healthy, is making a lot of difficulties for general services in order to keep the security. Even though the buildings has been boarded up, I have heard from them that numerous times they went inside and they found that people been inside, and somehow they're getting in. So could be a source of problem with earthquake and without earthquake.
And Mahmoud, wouldn't that release, if we had an earthquake that had certain characteristics that would cause the building to come down, wouldn't that release the asbestos and the other hazardous materials that are in the building?
Exactly. That would expose, thank you, Jackie, that would expose some of the hazmat that is within the building, the fabric of the building, exposed it to the air, and has to be very much fast, crew has to go and clean it up.
Okay. As, asbestos, is that the most expensive part of the deconstruction of this building? Is asbestos remediation?
Would be the hazmat, because as you mentioned, is deconstruction, demolition.
Right. This isn't going to be like an implosion, it's going to have to be a deconstruction.
Exactly. To get those out of the building before any demolition activities starts.
Okay. All right. Well, I'd like the CLA to please clarify what's before us one more time today.
So, Mr. Chair, there are several reports that are before you today. Some of the, the first is the MFC report from August 25, 2016, that reconfirms alternative B3 as the preferred alternative. The next on file is the CAO report, which is dated January 6, 2017, which the CAO's office has asked to receive and file due to the fact that they've submitted a revised report with amended recommendations dated March 14, 2017. As it relates to the Parker Center EIR, there is a old joint CAO, CLA, and BOE report and EIR from 2014 that the committee, if it decides to approve the 2016 EIR, should receive and file those two reports. And any other additional instructions you may want to include to staff related to the Parker Center or Civic Center, but those are all the reports before you today.
Just for clarification, though, we're approving B4, right?
It would be alternative B3.
Alternative B3.
Yeah, B4 was the alternative that was proposed as Councilmember Weezer's motion to consider the preservation option.
Got it.
B3 is the demolition of the building.
All right, I simply wrote down the wrong thing. B3, all right, terrific. All right, so here are the recommendations I'm prepared to, to support. And as it relates to the, I'm going to call it conceptual facilities plan and financial, financing framework, otherwise known as the Civic Center Master Development Plan. And that is approve the MFC recommendations from August 25 to reconfirm alternative B3 as the preferred alternative, and to approve the revised schedule to finance, I'm sorry, finalize the EIR process by the end of, hmm, February 2017. That can't be right, since it's already March.
And, Mr. Chair, that might have just been the recommended, because the MFC report went in August, so I think it was anticipated at the end of February, but due to the delays with scheduling and everything, that could be changed.
Okay, so the EIR process at the earliest possible convenience, how's that? Note and file the CAO report dated January 6, 2017. Approve the CAO report dated March 14 of 2017, including the approval of the Civic Center Development Plan and Financial Feasibility Study as a conceptual facilities plan and financing framework. And that's as it relates to Parker Center and the, the master plan, as I mentioned before. As it relates to Parker Center only, recommended actions, note and file the joint CAO, CLA, and BOE report and attached EIR dated November 24 of 2014. Approve the BOE recommendations as listed in the report dated December 7, 2016, and certify the final EIR. Instruct the CAO to report back with a potential financing plan or option, options on how to fund the development of the site of Old Parker Center and on the Civic Center master plan. And at this point, there is an addendum as well that I'd like to read. Instruct the Bureau of Engineering in collaboration with the Department of City Planning to initiate a study to develop urban design guidelines for the Civic Center Master Development Plan area and associated future improvements. And those are my recommendations. And let me just state one more time, I think what satisfies me more than anything else in terms of some of the turmoil that has been associated with this process is the city attorney's opinion in terms of this being in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act in that any project and any full master plan will go before the typical and accepted process, including SEQA and all of the other processes that all other plans follow. I'm very satisfied with that, and, and thank you for, for that clarification. Without objection.
No objection.
That shall be the order. Yes?
I'm sorry, sir.
Sure.
I think our current budget policies, our financial policies require that any MICLA that was authorized, even within the current budget, be reauthorized. And I just wanted to ensure that we were also being given that authority, which was to reauthorize the use of the MICLA for this purpose.
I, are we, I don't know that we're authorizing that with this action, I think that's a separate action.
No, that'll need to be done through the Budget Committee.
Yeah. Yeah, so that'll be a separate process. But I think that is the unexpected next step, but it does have that different process. Thanks, Ms. Wagner.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I think that the BOE report dated December 7, 2017, included instructions to authorize the, to reauthorize the use of the MICLA funding. So if the intent is to have the Budget and Finance Committee also review that reauthorization, then the, there would need to be a request to have that transferred over to the Budget and Finance Committee for review.
Okay, I would so request.
All right, let's do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so let, let that, let the record reflect that that will also be an additional instruction. Yeah. Thank you so much. I'm glad you, I'm glad you said something. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.